Megan. It's already being recorded, wow.
How are you, Justine?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Pissy day.
Always.
I swear, I love the Monday holiday until I have to make up for it on Tuesday.
I know, I know. This tricky.
Kinda crazy. So I'm not sure if, so I don't know if Greg and Stephanie can hear me, but I'm wondering, so if we do the negotiation first with Greg, I was thinking that Steph could then join us after that part.
That's fine, I think what would be helpful, and Greg and I discussed this earlier, so I'll set up the meeting room, and then when you're ready, I'll come back down and see if I can invite Steph to the room too.
Okay.
All right, so they'll join whenever you're ready to move on to that part of the agenda.
Yep, awesome, okay.
So I'll have, I'll have Greg text me that.
Hello, Chris.
Hello.
I came home and had zero plans for dinner, so the kids decided to go to Market Basket. Like, that's a bonus.
It's so convenient.
It really is, not gonna lie.
What did they get?
I don't know yet, they're not back yet.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, I just had an English muffin, but you know. We'll see what they end up with.
What do we have, just Greg's head today?
Yes, that's who we're negotiating with.
It can be harder than it looks, that head has no poker face, I mean, it's all poker.
It's all poker face.
I mean to wake you up. No, I was eating dinner.
Ah, yes. Hello, Jeff.
Good evening.
Hiya.
Good for you.
Thank you. I have the wrong meeting up. One minute, I think. No, it's 6:30, yay. All right, and I think everyone's here, yep, so I will entertain a motion to enter into, open the meeting and entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll move to enter executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and that is the NEPBA Police Union.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All right, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna start this up right now, I'm gonna pause recording.
My apologies for the late start. Let's see, who have I, do I have, did everyone come back? No, right, I'm still missing Armand, I think.
You know what, I bet you jinxed it, Justine, I bet he hit the other one.
I know, it's so tempting.
Yeah.
Really is. So, well, you know what, I have to start with the open thing anyway, so I will, I will start with the script for remotely conducted open meetings, and I know Armand will.
Greg, I have the board of the House.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Bob, thank you, Bob.
All right, so, as a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Select Board, permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Let's see, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand? And I am here. So currently, Armand is, is not here, he will, I'm assuming he will be joining us shortly. Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
All right, and I also see Megan, I see Joanna, so thank you for everybody.
Stephanie.
Oh, Stephanie, sorry, sorry.
Mark Malcolm.
All right, good evening, this open body, this open meeting of the Maynard Select Board is being conducted remotely in consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a public comment. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members and public follow along the agenda, as posted on Board Docs unless I know otherwise. Again, the easiest way to find that is go to the Town page, go to the Select Board page, go to tonight's meeting, and click on packet. And we are now turning to the first item on the agenda before it might be to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, I'll go to the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait till the Chair yields the floor to you and state. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, he'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting by a roll call vote. All right, and Armand, I don't see your video, but I say.
Yeah. I have. Yep.
Very good, we'll note that you are here, thank you. So, we are turning to the first item on the agenda, which would be public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? All right, Lauren? You can unmute yourself.
Hi all, thank you, and good to see you, I can't wait to get back to Town Hall and start bumping into everyone again. Some of you are aware, because I had sent an email this morning or last night to Greg and a couple others about my concerns and a number of other community members' concerns around PFAS exposure through the EDO spraying that's been going on. There was a piece in the Globe this morning, and my apologies, I ambiguous, the piece in the Globe was ambiguous about the Friday, that was the deadline to opt out. There are more than a dozen communities around us that have opted out of the spraying because Anvil 1010, the active agent in the spraying, has, was found last year to contain levels of PFAS, the cancer-causing agent, well above standards for drinking water in, in our state. And regardless of the deadline, and it does appear that the deadline passed last Friday to opt out, I think that it's, it's long past time, especially considering the water crises around PFAS that are affecting all of these communities around us, to request and formally get some hard data from one or ideally more than one public health officials to accurately and best inform us about the risks of, of triple E versus the risk of PFAS exposure through this agent that they're using, that the state is spraying over all of us and all of our kids and all that. I am not an anti anything when it comes to like, I want the best science to inform our decision, but we haven't yet been given that voluntarily by the state, and we clearly have a crisis around us. As I see it, there are two major risks here. One, of course, is the potential health risks, but the other is the financial risk to our town. I was glad to hear and relieved to hear that we are one of the lucky towns in this area that does not have PFAS levels exceeding 20 parts per trillion in our drinking water, that's fantastic, but so many of the communities around us were killed to be in our position, that is, in a position to proactively act to prevent PFAS exposure for our drinking water. And the biggest risk right now is what's flying above us and gonna be dropping PFAS on us over the course of the summer. So I want to get some hard data to inform our decision on whether we opt out for next year, or for whenever we are able to opt out. And I want to make sure that that's done and that we have a vote, whether that's board or town, to make sure that, you know, the town is well informed, the residents are well informed about the risks, and that we can take appropriate action. The opting out is a relatively simple process from what I could gather, it's coming up with a, a planned action, an action plan to inform residents about how to best protect themselves should you, should we opt out from exposure, you know, emptying, sitting water in a kid's water table in the backyard or whatever it is, that kind of thing, bug spray, all of that. Just as a reference here, obviously, you know, nobody's town financials are soaring right now, especially after COVID, but Wayland is now facing somehow having to come up, and this is Wayland, which has money, somehow having to come up with $10 million. They're spending $20,000 a week on bottled water for residents, and they have to come up with $10 million to either implement a high-tech filtration system for PFAS or hook up to the Water Resource Agency pipeline. And obviously, this is something that we are not facing, we're lucky we're not in a crisis mode like Hudson and all these other communities, but if we can take a simple, relatively simple action step to at least give us the time to get better informed about weighing the risks of, of triple E exposure versus this PFAS exposure, which is a forever chemical, I want to make sure that we have that tool. So I would ask that the vote, the board, the Select Board seriously consider this, and that we start taking action to find those professionals who can best inform our decision as a town and best inform our residents, so that next year we can opt out if that's the way we decide to go.
Thank you, Lauren, I really appreciate it, I appreciate you giving us the information, sending us the information, and I do think that it's something that, from the Board of Health level, it should go, the Board of Health should really take a harder look at this first, and then, and then advise the Select Board, but I definitely think that's something that we can ask them to do in, in, for the next year, within the next year.
Just like reply, I just, I know that in 2020, I looked this up, that we did not, we were not in the spray zone for last year, we were in 2019, but I know that they were very clear about when and where they were spraying, so I would like to ask if the town administrator would put up on the town website for this year, being we missed the opt-out phase, that if, if we are gonna be in the spray zone again, we may or may not, just depending on the extent of what the state activity is, if we could post in advance so that people know what those, and I believe they're usually evening hours, so that they're hitting when mosquitoes come out, when those, when those times and dates will be.
I believe, because that's the thing, is that there's two separate programs, there's a program, there's a mosquito control program that we are part of anyways, and then there's this state emergency spraying program that I think, in the beginning, back in 2019, when there was triple E and, and we had to really worry about it and, and sports were canceled and everything else, that was when the state did that kind of spraying, but they don't typically do that kind of spraying on a regular basis, or they haven't recently. So Megan, do you want to chime in?
Sure, so yes, we, we have been contracting with East Middlesex Control for a number of years, and in that program, we receive monitoring for mosquitoes, larval application, and public education, but that program does not include the pesticide that is being discussed from the state aerial spraying. So those ones, you know, at least from our understanding in that contract have been deemed safe, non-toxic, you know, applications. Then, so in 2019, we had a terrible year for triple E, as I'm sure you all remember, six people died across the Commonwealth, and it was the worst in, on record since the 1950s. So the state had to do some, you know, declare a public health emergency and do some significant, or they chose to do, you know, some significant aerial spraying. Up until last summer, there, you, the state could not do that type of spraying unless it was a public health emergency, and so last summer, there was a new law that said, actually, the, the state can't do this type of aerial spraying to manage the issue and to kind of mitigate potential triple E concerns. And so where we are today is that the municipalities had an opportunity to apply to opt out, and so that's, that's kind of what's being discussed today from that state program. So we're not talking about opting out of the local program that we've belonged to for a number of years, but it's the discussion about, you know, could Maynard opt out, you know, what, thinking about, is that, is that a possibility? Because there is some, there are some regional implications, I think the state also weighs kind of the history, the potential risk, so. But we didn't, we didn't do it this year, so I think, you know, the conversation is what, what information needs to be collected and analyzed before the decision is in the future, and at that point, you know, if the town, if the Select Board decided to vote to request to opt out, then it would be up to the state whether or not to grant that option.
The, one last question I had for you, Megan, and is okay if you don't know, I feel like back in 2019, they, they gave the towns a little bit of notice before they sprayed. Do you remember that? So, so that would be the thing, that's what Jeff's, I think Jeff, that's what you're alluding to also, is when we get notice that there will be spraying, that's something that I think we did typically put on the website.
Yeah, we did, we pushed it out on the website, on our social media pages, and I remember there was a lot of frustration from, from some residents wanting to know exactly when it was gonna happen, understandably, but a lot of the weather conditions depended on whether or not different regions will be, would be completed on certain days. So it's kind of like, I don't know if everyone's following along, my on again, off again paving updates that keep getting rescheduled, you know, that's the contractor who is, is making changes based on things out of our control, similar to state kind of aerosol spraying. If it's cloud, too much cloud cover, they might have gotten three quarters of the way through, so, but yes, I mean, at that time, when it was a real public health crisis, and there was a map that showed where everything was sprayed, and so we were, were very proactive about, you know, posting that information, and of course, we will be going forward. I'm not, I'm not sure to what degree the state will inform everyone, but anything that we find out, we'll absolutely share. We also do share when we're doing the application for the local East Middlesex Control Program.
Okay, right. Again, thank you, Lauren, thank you very much for bringing it to our attention, we'll, we will go from here.
Thank you, I appreciate, and just if I might just add one last thing, you know, I, I appreciate the, the town notice about it, you know, when it, when it might happen. Obviously, the concern in 2019 was a triple E public health crisis, we've had two major ones since then, but one that's unfolding, that's certainly of equal concern and directly related, although there are competing sources of that PFAS, is the PFAS water drinking? Although there are competing sources of that PFAS, is the PFAS water, drinking water crisis, so I'm hoping that in this new round of. Of decision making around spraying and with the added option that we can now opt out. That that health crisis is also considered alongside the triple E health crisis and well informed by, you know. Professional public health officials, but thank you, thank you again, thank you very much, guys.
No problem, thank you. Do I have any other public comments this evening? Okay. All right, then we will. Move on to acceptance of minutes, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of May 18th, 2021, as shown. And authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, anyone have any discussion points regarding the minutes? All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you. I will entertain a motion for correspondences.
Accept and approve correspondences A through H as shown.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone have any comments regarding any of these correspondences? All right, I was happy to see that the that the food and drink revenue is increasing over at the country club. So that's a good thing. All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm, yes. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, first one is going to be. Move to, sorry, I'll initiate a motion. To approve. Let's start with consent item A as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda item A as presented, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Armand. All right. So, just so everyone's aware, what we'll be doing is we are going to be reappointing. Rick Lefferts and John Corville to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. Leslie Bryant to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Kathy McMillan to the Board of Health. John Dwyer and Lyndy Gare to the Community Preservation Committee. Joseph Tupper and Mary McHugh are going to be constable. Ellen Duggan, Lee Caris and Paula Sage, Maynard Historical Commission, and Bill Crenshaw and Natalie Robert to the Planning Board. Anyone have any discussion about these? Questions, et cetera.
Yeah, Chris, this is just. One of the discussions you and I had was about one of the appointees that I was going back on the planning board. Are you still comfortable with that?
Comfortable, comfortable with.
That person going back on again.
I'm as comfortable as I'll ever be.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I do want to make it clear to everyone that that we, and I'm sure that that. Will reach out, but. Anyone who we reappoint tonight still does need to get sworn in at Town Hall at the Town Clerk's Office, so. So we are doing the appointing, but you do also have to get sworn in through the Town Clerk. And so. Any other questions about these? All right, then all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so I'd like to thank everybody for their participation and look forward to. Having you onboard for another few years. I will entertain a motion regarding consent.
I move to approve the. Our item B on the Consent Agenda Cemetery deed 2078. And and approve the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions about this one? All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you. All right. Number seven, use of town property, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the use of Veterans Memorial Park by the Maynard Public Library for the Summer Concert Series beginning in August 2021, and I will authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Armand. All right. So Greg, would you like to speak, I see Jean on the screen, would you like me to defer to her?
Or Mark, I don't know, we'll start, we'll start at the top, Jean.
All right.
What do you want to talk?
Hi, Jean.
Hi there, sorry, we're trying to make sure I was unmuted.
Can you reintroduce yourself one more time, Jean, because you're still.
The Jean McGuire Library Director, I actually am going to let Mark speak first, but I'm here as backup in case questions come up. So Mark is the one organizing this concert, so we'll let him go first, thank you.
My box does happen to be above Jean's on the screen, but that's, I guess, besides the point. Yes, I'm, the library is applying for a permit for the use of Memorial Memorial Park. On August 7th, 2021, for the, for the. Purpose of holding its annual free summer concert. In the park again this year, I can't, I can't believe that we're actually going to have a chance to do this. And. It'll be great because it will, will be maintaining a terrific town tradition by holding this concert. And it'll be like a reemergence. The people of Maynard, who've been stuck in their houses for over a year, will actually have a chance. To come out and and participate in a wonderful event. That they look forward to every year, so so if that's not a good enough reason, I I don't, I don't know what is. But anyway, that's what we're applying to do.
All right, sounds good, what, so you said it's August 7th is is your date?
Saturday, August the 7th.
Do you have a rain date, or is it, there's there no rain day?
There's no rain date, we would, we would then need a rain location, so I would probably apply to the school department for the use of the, of the high school auditorium.
Okay, all right. And do you have a time that you, time of day that you are thinking?
Well, the concert itself would take place at 6:00 PM, but you have the the sound check, the sound guy setting up the park. We would need the park pretty much from noon onward. Through till like 8:30.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Do we know who the who the revered guest is going to be?
Well, it's, it's, and it's still in its planning stages, but I will let the cat out of the bag. Don't tell anybody else. We're going to be bringing Broadway to Maynard, this is a big time Broadway actress. By name, a lot of people might not know her, but by by. Her experience, they would know. It, her name happens to be Melissa Erica, and she was Eliza Dolittle in the. Broadway revival of My Fair Lady, so this is, this is a big one. And it would be, it would infuse the the town with. With such a great spark Broadway coming to Maynard, that's a, and it would save us from having to go all the way down to Broadway. In fact, there would be no reason for us to go to Broadway, Broadway is dark. We'd be, we would be the only Broadway production that was going on. Admittedly, we'd be way off Broadway, but we would still be having a Broadway production, I think that's. That would be a feather in Maynard's cap.
Sounds great, what, does anyone have any other questions for for Mark? Sorry, I kind of hogged them. No comments, questions? All right. Well, then I think that we're probably ready to vote on this, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Did we lose, oh, Armand, Armand was.
No, you got me, yeah.
Hi, Armand. All right, Zen, you are in favor as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I am a yes. So congratulations, we can't wait to see it, we can't wait to hear more about it.
And congratulations on opening today as well.
Thank you very much, thank you, Select Board.
Thank you very much, folks, we appreciate you.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt you for, so there is, there is an item and possibly two, if I could ask you to consider that it came in late, late this afternoon, like as about five o'clock. So there, or maybe surely there before, but is it already a few, if you would consider an additional, like a sort of like a.
Last minute.
I lost me last minute, so one, and you can see maybe on the screen, we have Xana Noe here with us, so. Her event was canceled, so. In which Xana can explain, but it was due to weather, I believe. And so the board had already approved the use of Naylor Court just on the backside of Memorial Park to display. Well, no, to shoot, they were going to shoot the. Campaign video that y'all were going to do, and it was going to be right there, but it got canceled, so and they didn't have a rain date, so.
We did have a rain, it rained on both of our days.
Oh, bummer, all right, well.
It rained both.
So if the, so Madam Chair, would you consider, if the board would consider? I know this is, this is. Unorthodox, but to to allow the town administrator to authorize the town administrator to approve the use of the Naylor Court Park at a time that could be coordinated between myself, Xana, the rest of the team, town staff, et cetera. Because I don't know, you have a date, unless you have a date right now in your mind.
The ninth.
Oh. Has that been worked out?
The ninth of June.
But I don't know if we knew that, Becky, did we know that? Nope, so I don't know if we could, I don't know if we could, I just have to kind of, you know, we got to.
That's fine, that's fine.
Take a look at everything, yep.
Yeah.
It was hard to get everybody going on another date, but I I put my foot down today, it's at the ninth, but that's fine, we can work it out.
Yeah.
Looking for one more time, yeah.
All right, so then what I will do, and so there's also, and I know the other one that you're going to, I think maybe we can just do both. The other one you're going to mention would be Memorial Day is is Marge. Is actually considering, and is not set in stone yet, but she was considering possibly trying to do some kind of a. Ceremony this coming weekend. In the park, and so. I think it would be the same type of thing where we could authorize, because both of these. Events have already been approved by the board to use town property. That we could just authorize the town administrator's office to approve that use for those two, for that as well. So, yes, Becky?
My, our, your equipment.
Yes.
Is going to be at Walnut Street, so we'll need to make sure that we get equipment from Maynard High School to be in the park.
Okay, all right, well, so that was, we're trying to figure out, and and again, and we can go offline with, again, I'd like to get out of it. And have you guys organize it better.
Yeah, we can.
Once I organize it, it gets messy.
Yeah, we can handle the logistics, we just need, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, so I don't know if there's a, if there's a thought that it could be after, even if it's after the duck, because I know, so we've got the historic marker, we've got the duck race. Maybe it could be after the duck race, so you know, I don't know if that would give enough time to move it from one stage to another, or if it would just be better to have WABM set up there. So, so that was kind of a thought, but I'm not sure where everything landed after that. But yes, something to consider, thank you. So I will entertain a motion to author, actually, I'll make the motion, just because. I move to approve. I'm authorization of the town administrator to approve the use of Naylor Court for Xana Noe. And the use of Veterans Memorial Park for Marge, you know, so. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Chris. Anyone have any other questions about that, concerns about that? All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you, good luck, Xana.
Thank you so much.
Third time's a charm.
Yes, it is, it is, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, board, and I will, I will follow up with you when we get details about any of it.
Okay, great.
Thank you. All right, so. Onto item number eight, the joint meeting with the Maynard Housing Authority. Greg, do they need to? Do they need to convene?
Now, we have convened, I have Bill Crenshaw. Robert Subick. See David Hall, Judith Peterson, which are the four remaining board members, I'm Robert Lock, the director, and we also have Ellen Drago, the candidate here.
Okay, they're all in your, okay, all right. All right, then I will. Why don't we have the discussion first before we have the motion? Bob, would you like to explain, explain the the proceedings?
Proceedings are a result of a board member resigning his slot after the deadline for. Town elections, which then puts us into a joint meeting between the Housing Authority Board and. The selectmen to do this, this will be the last time this happens because the state regulations after May 15th, if the resignation had happened, will. Change as of next year, yeah, this would be taking the resignation and filling out the term till next July, June 30th. For the existing term.
Okay.
We only had one applicant, and that was Ellen Drago, she is a resident of Podable Circle. So there is tenant interest in her part.
Great, now, do you have a history of having residence of of the authority on the authority?
Robert Subick currently.
Okay.
Is elected member and he is a resident also.
Great, no, thank you, thank you.
There will be a requirement. To have one. As of next year.
Okay, all right. Perfect. All right, does anyone have any questions for Bob or Ellen, Joanna?
I would like to just add to clarify, the position will be appointed till the next town election. Then they would run for one year. On that, and then it would be on the ballot again the following year for the new five term. So for two years in a row, that position will be on an elected ballot, I just want to make sure everybody understood that. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Joanna.
Yes. We do.
All right, and I see, is that Ellen right there? All right.
No, I lost her for a second, that's all. She's there.
All right, very good.
We'll bring her back, hopefully. You got her or no?
Got a black screen, Bob.
Right.
Where the heck did I go then?
Now your name shows up.
There, now you're on the other one. There we go.
I'm on my iPhone, yep.
Now you're on both.
All right.
All right. Nope, that that works. You can make it all.
It works, okay. Ellen is there, right?
Yeah. Hi, Ellen, how are you?
I am fine, how are you?
Very good, thank you. All right, so does anyone have any questions for either Bob or Ellen? Moving forward.
No, I read your your summary, Ellen, and thank you very much for. For being willing to take on. No, I read your, your summary, Ellen, and thank you very much for, for being willing to take on the position.
You're welcome, it's something I've been interested in doing for a while, and I thought where is a one-year term? It was a good opportunity to give it a tryout and get back into the different connections with the town of Maynard. As you read in my summary, I was quite active back in the seventies with getting Field Street accepted as a public way instead of a private way, and took me three years of being on the town warrant, but I did it. And I look forward to working with the people that are on the board at the present time.
Great. Anyone else have anything for Ellen? Greg, did you have something for Ellen, or are you just waiting? Okay, all right, I agree with David, I read, I read your, your request, and, and thank you for filling it out, thank you for, for giving us a little bit of insight as to who you are, really appreciate that. So we will entertain a motion, I will entertain a motion from the Select Board side, and we will vote, and then the Housing Authority can do the same. And we'll go from there, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to, let me just find it, do we have the dates on this? I'll move to appoint Ellen Drago to the Maynard Housing Authority for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, Bob, you guys want to vote over there?
Yep, we will take a vote on the same motion, Bill?
Make a vote, yes, yes.
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 All yeses.
Congratulations.
All right, very good, thank you very much, Ellen, thank you, everyone else. Good luck, and we appreciate everything, we appreciate.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Okay, so I am going to move on to item number nine, which is the RBC Installation Services. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the contract with Interstate Water and Wastewater Specialists LLC for the repairs to the rotating biological contractors contacters of the town's wastewater treatment facility in the amount of $112,600 in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Justin, welcome back.
Good to be back, how's everybody doing?
Good.
But just for everybody else, Justin Demarcus, Deputy Director. I am glad to see that Interstate was the awarding contractor. They've done work in the past on our RBCs, they are very familiar with our system. I do just want to let the board know that that cost is not reflective of two change orders that already need to take place immediately. So when we asked to deficit spend, you remember that we requested roughly 200K? That was based off of the idea and the concept of the actual repair versus the materials delays and some COVID interference. So our big bid award came in at, at lower than expected, but we need to initiate two change orders to actually accommodate the 100% repair, which should drive the cost up roughly to about $150,000, but we're in a good place, so the 200,000 is roughly there. I do want to add that, just for context, we pushed with this bid to have this repair done immediately based off of our permitting situation for our NFTs into the river. Significant material delays may not have that completed until post-July 1st, which interferes with two things. One, our NFTs permit, but DEP is well aware of this, so they're, they're, they've been informed throughout the process. Two is our deficit spending is only for FY21. So if this carries over into FY22, myself and Lori have discussed next options where we can take our FY22 budget, and if we have to go over with the line, we can either adjust it with an article at special town meeting, or have another request for deficit spending. So just be aware that there might be a second round of deficit spending requests, or an article to pay for this at special town meeting. Depends on the actual delay of the, of the repair and the timeline that it takes place.
Okay, so if we, if we see it again, it's not that you want that money a second time. It's just it was never able to be spent the first time.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're in that tough situation where we're overlapping a fiscal year, you know, and we don't want to necessarily hold things back, especially on the, on the importance of the repair and its ability to impact our permit.
All right, anyone have any questions for Justin?
I would like to, before we let Justin go after the vote, I'd like to ask Justin a quick question about the topic that came up earlier this evening relative to the mosquito spraying and the impact on, and Justin, if you're not ready to discuss it, that's fine.
Ready to do.
Okay, you know, because we could do that the next meeting, we have time, I just want to hear your thoughts on that topic, but I didn't want you to log off before, before we were done.
Can I ask a question about the RBC, because I know Justin will talk, but I have a question about RBC, Justin, I'm sorry, I didn't know that there was two addendums, no.
Change orders.
Change orders, so do you know the, do you have the, do you have the cost of those change orders?
We haven't actually initiated them, we strategically planned for them without the potential of going over 200. Now that the bid came in at the award price lower than anticipated, those change orders will come across your plate and then kind of come back to, to the Select Board. But I just wanted to keep it in mind while you're thinking about it now, like, oh, why did it go up another, why are you back for a second time with an extra 30 grand? It was based off of, the change orders are for extra bearings, and those bearings are different than our original repair, and those bearings had a delay that the other bearings did not, so we didn't want to interfere with the immediate, the immediate repair. Well, now the original bearings have a delay that matched the existing, so at this point, we want to do the project right, not just rush it, and I don't want to duct tape it, so, so the money has kind of come in where we thought it should be, or a little lower, so we have the ability to make sure that we capture and repair this the right way.
All right, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And David, I'm assuming you're.
Let's take, let us vote on this topic first.
Yep.
All right, so anyone have any other questions related to the RBC or the contract for Justin? All right, then let us move forward with a vote for that. All in favor to approve, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so thank you. And Justin, yes, I think the concern is, is what public comment this earlier tonight was a concern about PFAS coming out of the aerial spraying for mosquitoes and how that might affect our water supply.
Right, so I, I know that Greg put some, some information on the TA report, and we want to make sure that the Select Board, as the Water and Sewer Commissioners, are fully aware of the PFAS situation as it is transpiring, moving at a dynamic rate from DEP. DEP's been very reactionary ever since the Hudson, the town of Hudson incident, which we are aware of, as White's Pond was impacted by that same situation. The difference between us and Hudson was White's Pond is an inactive source in our supply, where Hudson's active source was, was over the MGL requirement from the federal limits and the state limits at the time. Well, there's been some significant changes to the DEP limits on PFAS, drastic drops in reduction to allowable contaminants in the drinking water source, a number of communities, as I was trying to be very proactive and wrote a memo prior to my vacation, I realized that the Boston Globe dropped a bomb while I was away, but that's all right. We are not being reactive in our approach to our utility, we're actually trying to be very proactive. Currently, right now, none of our drinking, our active drinking water sources violate DEP's PFAS limits of 20 parts per trillion. We are starting to see significant increases. Now, the question, as you, as you can imagine, if you are not familiar with the Boston Globe article in PFAS and the drinking water, as you can imagine, this has spurred and triggered, what's PFAS? Why is it getting into public drinking supplies? Why is this now an issue? PFAS is almost in every product around us. It is on our shirts, it is in our toothpaste, it is everywhere, it is a chemical used to, it, it's Teflon just used in random patterns, and there's a number of PFAS chemicals, and it's actually categorized into six different PFAS chemicals. So if you were to ask me, do I oppose and should you support denying DEP to spray for mosquitoes? It's a balance of the two. What's worse for public health is mosquitoes E. coli situation worse than PFAS in our, in our water systems. I will tell you that the trend for our drinking water systems has been increasing, and it is starting to get to the point where we're planning, emergency planning, and we are pivoting in our design processes for well 4A and Treatment Plant 4. We have an innate ability to be proactive right now, while other communities do not. Some of our other communities, especially our neighbors Acton, are building and have already built a 1 million gallon plant that did not account for PFAS removal, and they are actively, their sources are actively violating, as well as Wayland's Concord's is creeping that way as well. So just know that we're not the only community dealing with this, this is a state issue. I would just recommend that you weigh the options of both, and just know that eliminating the mosquito spray doesn't necessarily eliminate PFAS in our drinking water system right this second. It is not a direct cause and effect. PFAS is, is, has been migrating from a number of contaminated sources, and DEP is still trying to track that. Now, there's different DEP, you know, areas of expertise, and they don't always communicate like intergovernment, you know, has a tendency to not always, you know, work in advance sometimes. DEP, from the water standpoint, is still identifying sources, while other DEP sources are starting to understand and get those inter-office memos, like, hey, you need to start looking at your chemicals. And that's where the mosquito spraying is starting to come into play, pesticide use, etc. like that. So just know that, at least for the town of Maynard, in our public drinking water supply, we're, we're trying to be very proactive in our approach. And if you, as a board, choose to ask DEP to not spray, I would support that as your manager for your public drinking water source. But I would ask you to just take a look at the public health impacts of, of non-mosquito spraying as well, and what those implications will have on some of the other areas throughout the community.
But I, I'm not sure if you've noticed this, but we are past the opt-out period for this year, Justin, so it may become a cover for next year, but I wanted to ask, do we know, because it looked to me from the announcement, just to back the envelope calculation, that the aerial spray was not a huge contributor to a lot of what we're seeing across the state, so why are we seeing a jump? Do you, do we know that, do we have, and I'm guessing you don't have a straight-up, this is why, so do we have any inclination? Do we know about the history of, is it, say, the State Fire Academy down near White's Pond? Is it stuff from the, the base that, that is now the Wildlife Refuge? Are there other sources that we feel may be moving? Any?
Yeah, Jeff, those are great questions, and they're questions that are constantly being bombarded at the state level public forums. And the real issue was, the original Hudson situation was, okay, there's a direct correlation, there's a direct impact. The fire academy, the plating company, they clearly use PFAS, that was what they did, they were a plating company for Teflon-style products. We know that PFAS is used in fire suppression situations, that was a clear situation. The problem is, at that time, at that reactionary approach, the DEP standard was well above 40, and the federal standard is just advisory. So there was, like, you could have 100 parts per trillion for the federal standard, it was just, hey, just be advised if this has health concerns. Mass DEP is always a little more stringent. The issue is, since that Hudson situation, DEP took a very reactionary approach to understanding that they needed to look at it from a localized level. That, you know, just because the feds think it's okay, doesn't mean we need to think it's okay, and that public forum and that outcry really pushed DEP. What ended up happening is PFAS is very hard to test for, so we have to do water sampling. And water sampling is done for a number of situations, bacteria, virus, etc. Well, when we PFAS test, our guys, our, our actual employees can't wear any materials that may cause PFAS contamination. It is parts per trillion, you know this, Jeff, so tiny molecule that it could be, there's samples, we have to do, you know, blanks and everything to make sure this is accurate. The problem is, when DEP did their reactionary approach, the labs weren't ready and prepared to accurately give us the data properly. So you, we actually volunteered with a number of communities where DEP tasked UMass and the UMass Extension Program to bring in, you know, that collegiate scientific exploration, where we, as other communities, just gave free samples, we weren't required, but we wanted to be proactive in our approach, and we gave all these samplets. Well, UMass was actually developing, and we know how DEP works, they use this as guinea pigs. UMass was developing the testing to more accurately depict what's in the water. Once that testing happened, which was actually last December, January, all of a sudden, all communities started to see their numbers drastically increase. It went from like two parts per trillion to tenfold, and it's because, at that point, they devised an analysis that was more accurate. Now everybody's panicking. So for us, we were well within the clear, we were under two on all of our well sources, we were great, we were not panicking about it at all, while others were in the teens and the fifteens. Well, once UMass changed that, most communities like Acton and Wayland, that's why you're seeing Boston Globe write an article, is, well, their original numbers were under the DEP requirement. Once that analysis and that accurate data was depicted, they all became violated. We have not become violators, we have gone up, but we have not become violators. We are seeing a slow peak rise, which does concern us, we are waiting to see, we have been tasked with providing PFAS on a monthly testing basis at Old Marlboro and Treatment Plant 4. Those are our higher, our two higher treatment plants. Those are monthly task orders, where Rockland is a quarter task order, because it's still lower and it's under that 10 threshold, which requires a monthly.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, because you, how long have you been doing the monthly testing at that site for?
So we were required to do the monthly testing since April. So rarely, we only have two, and Mays has come back with, needs to be retested, because it's that sensitive. The lab messed it up, so we had to retest. So we, I, I know within my report that, within the TA report, you will see an Excel file, and we updated that again today to accurately depict, and I want to, I want to create the, the visual understanding of where we were to where we are and where we're trending, and if we're trending higher, how we should start to react. And then carrying this into September, as you know, I typically come in September, October for water and sewer rates, our capital plans wrapped around that, what are we doing for the future of our utility? At that point, I should have some serious accurate data to say, we need to pivot based on our five-year plan, our 10-year plan, and focus on this, this, and this, or we need to build in contingency plans for stabilization, because if we have a hit, we need to be prepared for emergency water situations, so that's what we're building here.
I want to go back before I go forward, though, so what you're telling me, because I'm looking at a couple of jumps between 19 numbers to 20, 20 numbers, you're saying that that's a result of a recalibration of the testing, not saying that's physically happening underground in terms of our water supply?
Correct, but that is still up for interpretation. We know that the labs that we originally sent the test to when we were first asked were asked to work with UMass Extension. Once UMass Extension did their research, everybody's numbers in the Commonwealth went up. So we do not necessarily believe there is a contamination increase, we believe that the testing has been. We believe that the testing has been more precise.
Okay, that doesn't necessarily answer why the well for treatment plant numbers did not see that same increase over the same time. So I'm still a little concerned about that. But if, if what you're saying is true, then it also doesn't make sense to put these two numbers next to each other on the same spreadsheet. Because now it looks like we had a doubling or even a, well, not quite a tripling of, of these numbers when really it's the test, not something that's happening underground. So I just wanna be very careful about how we display these numbers. And if we think it's a result of a different testing procedure, make that absolutely clear. But I'm assuming the testing procedure changed, but the state's twenty part per trillion did not change, which also seems a little confusing that what's the logical basis behind that twenty per trillion? Does that get readjusted or, or, okay?
Yeah, tho- those are the, the situations why we're trying to be proactive. Even with, if you look at that Excel sheet, and I'm sure it's maybe some of you have, maybe some of you haven't, is the first testing was per well site. And that was prior to the change in the DEP. Well, now DEP classifies it because some of our well sites are blended water. So like Old Marlboro is well one and well one A. Yes, there are individual straws in the ground, but they're actually raw water that is blended prior to the treatment. So those, like the, the recent calibrations and testings represent what DEP's regulation now requires. I wanted to make sure that the community was well aware that we were testing even before we had the test. And that is the example in the actual numbers from when we were testing since when Hudson and White's Pond were initially impacted. That this whole time, that Maynard's Utility, Water and Sew Utility, has not forgotten about PFAS. We have been working with DEP, we have been putting in for, we put in for two PFAS grants through DEP and were denied twice. That we're doing as much as we can to try to stay proactive in our approach. And fortunately, those PFAS grants are going to affected, immediately affected communities. So we still have the ability to plan on our end, which we are doing. And we have, we're kind of in a somewhat good position when it comes to planning. Not necessarily on saving money, but on the planning aspect and not engineering something over and over and over again. So as we're, with well treat, with Treatment Plant Four and Well Four A, we actually do not have final designs yet. Which is a good thing because we can incorporate a modular approach to our design to add PFAS removal in the future if we need to. So we can start to, from a, you know, a, a physical infrastructure standpoint, prepare ourselves and put ourselves in the best position to react if we need to react.
So this is definitely something we can put on. Thank you, Justin. I really appreciate it. And thanks for the questions, Jeff, and David for starting us off. I definitely think that this is something that people will want to hear about. I want to give the Board of Health the opportunity also to really kind of dig into the PFAS plus the spraying. Because that really is, you know, in, in my previous hat-wearing, I was over at a Board of Health and basically they handled a lot of the PFAS, they handled the mosquito spraying, they handled all of that type of thing. So I definitely want to give a chance for them to review everything. And then, you know, maybe in August, you know, July or August or something like that, as we're coming into mosquito season and everything else, we can kind of get an idea of where we're at. And we can maybe put that on the agenda for maybe late August.
Yeah, and I, I would recommend, like, to reinforce what Justin said about making sure it's holistic look. It's not just looking at the PFAS, but balancing the risks from that versus the triple. And the other negatives from the chemicals used to fight the triple E as well, in addition to the negatives from the chemicals that are the PFAS concerns that have been brought up recently.
Right, all right, sounds good. We will, we will give that to them as well. All right, so, so then we'll move on to marijuana, item number ten, marijuana license amendment requests. And so we will start with Green Star Herbal. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to amend the hours in the marijuana retail license for Green Star Herbal to nine AM to ten PM daily. Authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Thank you, Chris. Greg, I actually do have a question. In the public content, you say the Green Star Herbal is requesting the change of their hours from eight AM to eight PM. Oh, nevermind. Okay, nevermind. All right, so, sorry, do you, Megan, do you want to speak to this?
So Green Star Herbal has a special permit with the planning board. And in that, they included hours of operation. So they had the hours of operation as eight AM to eight PM. And recently, the planning board, as part of the special permit, brought back Green Star Herbals to kind of report on how things were going. Since this was the fir-, you know, one of the first of its kind in this type of, this type of business in town. So at that meeting, they requested to change their hours of operation. So the planning board did, you know, take their request and altered the special permits hours of operations. But this board, the select board, is the local licensing authority. So our rules and regulations state that the select board can further reduce the hours, you know, can do anything within the parameters of the special permit. So the, so Green Star Herbal is asking for their hours to be from nine AM to ten PM. And so the special permit is allowing for that larger window for them to be open. And it's up to the select board if they would like to permit the business for being open on their license, those hours that they have requested.
Okay. Any of my board members want to comment? I do see that Tom Maury is here. Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Very good, thank you.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And we just want to say that business has been excellent. We've opened up, there's been no safety issues. You know, everything's been going great. We, we've gotten a lot of different demographic, demographics for the customer base, so people are coming in and out of town. We're trying to promote the local businesses. So things, you know, from that perspective are, you, you know, you know, going great. And, you know, one of the things that we need to do as a partner, as a, you know, with the town, is we'd like to be on an equal, you know, playing field with the liquor licenses in town, which is ten PM. This will give us, you know, the ability to, you know, compete better and ultimately give the town of Maynard more money. You guys make three percent, you know, on a city tax, you know, for every sales, and you're, you're also making three percent on, you know, with the HCA. So it benefits the town, it benefits us as a, you know, corporation that we, we, we want to come in and be able to offer the best, you know, you know, and compete and, and, and win business to make money for the town. Our other store in Drake it, they close at ten o'clock. And I can tell you that we've been giving them checks for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on a quarterly basis. We would like to get that, to that with the town of Maynard as well. You guys, as, you know, you've invested in cannabis, now it's time for the rewards. And that's what we're asking for is just, you know, just to make well, you know, you know, playing field with the local liquor stores in town and other businesses around, so we can bring revenue to Maynard.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for either Megan or Tom? And I do see Bill Nemser is on as well, if you have any other questions regarding planning.
Megan, we haven't seen any issues related to traffic since their opening, correct?
We haven't, no. And we've, you know, as part of the kind of re-examining of the special permit, Bill did reach out to a number of, you know, please fire DPW and checked in with everyone. And we haven't received complaints to date, which is exciting.
Very good.
All right, anyone else? Great. Well, then, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So good luck.
Well, thank you very much. And, and again, we can't wait to, you know, do a lot of good things for the town of Maynard. You know, I think we're a destination. And, you know, we just want to work together and I think it's going to be a real successful partnership. And thanks again for all, you know, all the support, you know, for Maynard. We're happy to be here. And again, can't wait to keep on, you know, getting to work and, you know, making, you know, great funds for, you know, for, for, for the town of Maynard.
Thank you very much. We look forward to the partnership.
Thank you.
All right, and then we will move on to the second one, which is Mass Wellspring. And I will.
Is that you? Can you mute yourself, Olaf, if that's you?
Okay.
I'll move to amend the hours in the marijuana retail license for Mass Wellspring to ten AM to ten PM daily. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. So Megan, I, I assume this is the same situation?
Yes, this is the exact same. Mass Wellspring also came to the planning board on the same night and requested to change their hours. It was a, you know, review of how that special permit is going. And, you know, as due diligence, Plan Director Bill Nemser did also reach out to the same individuals to see if there are any issues, there were none. And so the planning board did change the hours to the special permit. And the applicant is requesting that the local licensing board also change their hours of operation from ten AM to eight PM and then changing it to ten AM to ten PM.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Olaf, if you want to unmute yourself, if you'd like to speak?
Sure, good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board. So far, everything's going great. I don't think that we're having had any traffic issues. We're about to hire more staff. We are about to hire the fifth Maynard resident. And, yeah, it's, it's going great. So I appreciate that you guys are voting on this tonight and hopefully that will be good for the town.
Great, sounds good. Now, actually, a question I didn't ask on the last one. So when do these hours go into effect, Megan? Is it, is it immediately after we approve them or do they have to get?
This would be the last step. So yeah, once it's approved, I think Becky has, has the license and, and the in-board doc. So once this is approved, then they can, they can move forward.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have any questions for Olaf or Megan or Bill? All right, well then we'll move forward. And all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand, sorry.
Yes.
Lost you on my screen. Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. All right, good luck, Olaf. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much and have a nice weekend.
Thank you, you too.
He's already moving on to the weekend.
I was just saying, wait a minute, it's Tuesday.
The weekend just ended yesterday.
Yeah.
I will try to have a good weekend too. All right, next we have a presentation regarding the extension of present, of extension of premises. I am assuming this will be Megan.
This is.
All right.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Sorry, it's just a little delayed on my end here. Yeah, okay. So, um, today, this evening, I'd like to talk a little bit about a municipal extension of premises program, which will allow for outdoor dining on municipal property. So to talk about a more permanent program, I think it's important to kind of revisit where we've been. As we all know, last spring, when we, we were in the COVID nineteen state of emergency and pandemic and businesses were forced to close, we really were kind of looking at what we could do to allow for some businesses to extend their premises and allow for, you know, outdoor activities because it'd be safer. So what we did was, did a lot of public outreach and looking at both restaurants and retail stores. You know, what could we, as a community, offer? And we couldn't offer much in the way of funds or, you know, other direct support to businesses. What we could offer is use of public space. So after reaching out to the Maynard Business Alliance, this really kind of initiative started through the Select Board and the Economic Development Committee. Also, a conference with the Parking Authority, we created the temporary extension of premises program. And that is what you see today when you drive downtown through Maynard. So it was created in the spring and, but it's been, it's, you know, it's been a little while. In fall twenty twenty, we thought that the, we thought COVID might be winding down, but it was really ramping back up again. So the state, the state of emergency that allowed for this use specifically was about to expire. But it allowed for the local licensing authority to continue the program and allow for extensions for the applicants. And so I think it proved successful because all of the applicants returned to the Select Board for a permanent extension and they were all granted at that time. Then, after the winter and spring twenty twenty one, you know, COVID was still with us. And the, the plan was to continue the twenty twenty program. And all the businesses who participated in twenty twenty also came back for a twenty twenty one license and they were all granted. So we've had kind of the same seven, I believe, restaurants at this point continue to extend their premises on municipal property and have done that since the inception of the program. So I made it as a destination. This is something, you know, we talk about a lot. I think raising our managed profile and bringing residents and visitors to town really benefits everyone. And it's also a critical component of the cultural district. It's also, you know, key to our downtown overly district and really benefits all businesses. I think, you know, if you are dining outdoors or walking to dine outdoors, you might see other businesses that you might have overlooked if you drove by. And it really does bring undeniable vibrancy to our downtown. So I think we've definitely benefited from this opportunity. And the, the businesses that have been interested in taking advantage of it have really been creative and invested in town and pivoted to allow this additional amenity. So, you know, when we talk about new policies, I think the first thing to look at is our master plan, of course. There's extensive surveying done that asks residents and, you know, all sorts of folks in town what they'd like to see. And there is an overwhelming theme of outdoor dining, outdoor seating, places to, you know, to connection to the restaurants, how to make it, how to make our downtown more vibrant. And so this policy does line up, you know, with that thought process in the master plan. We also have the, commonly we're known, known as the Behringer Report. The report, Five Point Associates, I think it's called, exploring the potential of a food and culture and entertainment destination, which also talks a lot about outdoor dining and how it adds vitality to the street and it can provide a festive atmosphere. As I mentioned, it is an essential component of mixed use, which is a part of the downtown overly zoning district. And, you know, another benefit is increased activity on the street can, in the reduction of some of the lane size can result in a traffic calming measure, which is, you know, something that we like to see in our downtown when we increase pedestrians. So we definitely have, and one final one is our ULI report that was done last year also had a real emphasis on kind of place making and using outdoor space to benefit the entire community. So, you know, when, when we're looking at these policies and our recent surveying, it does seem to align with what the community is looking to do. surveying, it does seem to align with what the community is looking to do. And that is to kind of work on activating our, our downtown. So this is a map. Um, I don't know if you remember that we, uh, Caitlin Young created actually last summer because I think it's really important, you know, the Select Board wanted to look at, well, this is, this is the municipal parking. This is public, this is town property. And if you're allocating it for alternative uses, let's take a look holistically and see what, um, what we're really doing so that we can make sure that, um, you know, there's still a good mix of parking and these alternative uses. So a couple of things I'll point out here are, um, we did add five parking spots thanks to, um, the agreement with Green Star Herbal. So these parking spaces here were not, it's, those boxes are not exactly perfect. I added these on Caitlin's map, so they're not, they're not the best, but they, um, this is five parking spaces that were, that were striped as part of that agreement. So it's, it's an increase of parking spaces on Main Street, which is a pretty big deal. I don't think a lot of towns could add parking spaces safely to their main corridor. So that was, that was very exciting. We also, this summer, are adding parking meters here. And this is part of the parking policy that the Select Board adopted last summer to create a consistent policy on Main and Nason Street. For, you know, for some reason, this block had not been metered. And, um, so people are currently able to park there all day without any enforcement implications. So installing meters is going to allow for, um, parking turnover and so allow for more availability of parking spaces, which is the main goal of the Parking Authority as well as the Parking Management Plan. Um, finally, the Police Department has, um, you know, increased parking meter enforcement. So, you know, folks that are parking, um, in these spots, there, there are some eyes now, um, that there hadn't been before, but there's, you know, some new staff involved and, um, you know, trying to make sure that you're not parking at a meter for longer than your allotted term is, again, another way that we're trying to encourage longer-term parkers to go to places that, um, are not metered and that are allowed for it. You know, we want to have a mix of short-term, midterm and long-term parking, which we do. We have longer-term parking, you know, of course, in River Street, along the rail trail and several spaces, um, you know, back in Naylor Court. So trying to encourage people that are going to be there all day to park a little bit further away so that they can, um, allow for the main corridors to be used for visitors and customers like. Um, and I, you know, there had been some concerns about the, the use of parking, um, for alternative uses here. So I just wanted to be, you know, transparent about that. And, and looking here at, at our map, you can see how many spots are used for other uses and how many are used for, um, public parking. So where we are today, um, the state, the governor filed legislation last week to extend certain emergency measures. One of them is, is, um, our, you know, public meetings, um, which we're waiting to see what happens. Another one is to extend the, um, the local licensing authority to extend our outdoor dining programs through the, through the end of the summer, actually through the end of the fall, really, the end of November. But that is not, um, it's still, it's just a bill. So we don't know yet. And it, it may, it may go through, it may take a long time, you know, we're not sure. So, you know, when we discussed this at a previous Select Board meeting, we wanted to think about, well, what are we going to do for, um, the businesses that had been counting on this as part of their business plan for the year? Currently, the August 15th, the, the approval ends. So it seems like now is the time to make sure we're on the same page and collecting public input for a policy so that, um, you know, we could confidently say this is what the community wants to do and allow for restaurants or businesses to, restaurants to extend their liquor license if they serve liquor at the time. Because that is a process that has to go through the ABCC. That is a, you know, a state regulated process and, um, they would have to do that on their own. But they really would need to know that, um, you know, there is an opportunity to use public space if they were to go through that process. So that's kind of why we're, we're looking at this right now. So right now, um, I'm in public input phase. Uh, we know, we have a temporary program, so it's not totally starting brand new, but there are things that we're learning as, as we're kind of had this program now for one whole season and just starting up the second, the second season. So I did a similar presentation to the Economic Development Committee last week. And we have a Parking Authority meeting on Thursday afternoon where we'll discuss this and its impact on the, on the public municipal parking inventory. Also, we'll be presenting at the Maynard Business Alliance on the 8th to discuss it with that membership and see if there are any concerns. So far, it seems like the Maynard Business Alliance, you know, speaking with the, um, president the other day, they, they seem to be on board and are encouraged by the foot traffic that it brings. And, um, the mayor, the Main Street businesses. So, you know, there are, there is one section that has more alternative uses than, than some of the other, like one kind of block. And so I've been working with the, the business owners and that business community to look at the policy and see if there's anything that, um, could be tweaked. One, one example is where parking is a little tighter on Main Street. You know, it, it kind of raised an, an idea that I think would be helpful on our application, which is to encourage applicants and their employees to park in these longer-term areas that I identified earlier. So, you know, I think our main goal in the Parking Authority, too, is to encourage people that are going to be there all day to, to move off, but to kind of raise that profile and to put it on the application and have, have the applicant say, yes, we understand that, you know, if we'd be using, if we're requesting public parking for business, um, would like to, you know, encourage our employees to not take up additional parking spaces on the main corridor in a metered spot and encourage them to move, move a little bit further away. Um, and also I'm here today with the Select Board, of course. So if you have any input on, um, this policy, I'd love to hear it. And really just for next steps, I'm finalizing the policy. I have sent it around to our internal team who vets each application. And my next step is to send it to, to incorporate all those, um, suggestions and, and in both a policy and an application, um, really kind of removing the COVID piece. And so saying, what does this look like if this is an annual program? Once I have that finalized and shared with our town council and get that comments back, I'm going to, you know, share it with all the stakeholders again. My hope was to bring it on the 15th. I'll tidy it up. But that might be a little bit of a reach. I, I hope to have some, have a, you know, a good policy by then. And that, that's what I'm planning to do. Um, so I'll keep you posted if everyone gets back to me and Town Council is able to really have, take the time to review it because obviously that is a key component. Um, and that is all I have for today. So, you know, I'd love, this is really just kind of an overview. I did not share, of course, um, the actual policy, which will be similar to the temporary policy or the, or the application. But if there are any concerns or suggestions as this is being developed, and, you know, I'm happy to hear from, from the board about this. And you can also, um, you know, contact me at any time to, to hear about how the process is going and/or tune into any of the meetings to hear another version of this presentation.
Great. Thank you, Megan. Thank you very much for, for the, your hard work on this, for trying to get in front of it. Um, because I know we've gotten really good, uh, feedback regarding the downtown program. So I appreciate you moving forward with this and, and trying to get all the stakeholder, stakeholders involved. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Megan or comments?
Uh, I've got a couple of quick comments. First off, Megan, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work on getting, you know, things thought through. I did mention at a previous meeting that there are a couple of business owners along, and I think you referenced the stretch, uh, along Main Street where, um, as the, these, um, business opportunities, which I strongly support, the, um, the extension of outdoor dining, I think it's been a positive benefit. But there are a couple of business owners and for a lack of a better phrase, their types of business are transient business. And by that, I don't mean that the businesses themselves move around, but the customers are come and go. For example, the liquor store and the florist. And there are other restaurants along the way, some of the pizza shops that are much more tending. They do not have indoor seating, really. They have three or four seats so that people are pick up and leave. And I think there is a little bit of a concern that as we expand for certain businesses, the ability to be outside and possibly take up additional parking spaces, that it actually limits their customer's ability to quickly stop in and obtain, you know, run in, get flowers and come out and leave, uh, because there are less, the people that are taking their spots are eating and are across the street at, you know, Smack Doodle or, or, uh, you know, at one of the other places. So there's a concern from some of those businesses and I think we need to take those businesses into account as well and, and make sure that they're part of the conversation and don't feel left out when it comes time. And suddenly they see that their customers don't have an opportunity to come in and out. So that's my observation, but, uh, I wanted to give a good news story is I monitor quite frequently some of our neighboring towns' Facebook pages and, and community pages or whatever. And, um, one of the ones I monitor frequently is Overin Acton. I don't know the name of the particular page. But they were talking about dining and opportunities in Acton for dining and outdoor dining and everything else. And, um, the comments as you went along was, um, take a look at what they're doing in downtown Maynard. We need to find a place to do that similar in Acton. And they referenced, they said it was like a European style and everything else. And it was quite a bit of positive. And, you know, having grown up in Acton and having seen, having lived here for, you know, decades now and seeing the relationship between those two communities, to see positive comments about Maynard coming from an Acton Facebook page like that was refreshing and something that you probably wouldn't have seen, uh, too frequently over the last, you know, 25, 30 years. So, um, that's good news for us. And that's the type of thing we've got to continue to, to drive on and, uh, and pick up on. So, but, uh, so my first comment is that please don't, let's not forget about the smaller businesses that may not have outdoor seating in their plans or part of their, their business model, that they need to make sure that their customers can get in and out quickly without having their spaces taken up by people who are sitting down for an hour and a half to eat, even though you get two hours on the meter. So, uh, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, David. Anyone else have any other comments, questions? All right. Um, all right. Then thank you, Megan. I'm sure we'll, we'll look forward to seeing the next iteration of the policy and, uh, whenever you get a chance. All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, item number 12 is going to be, uh, the part of COVID-19 reopening. We are here. Uh, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the remote participation policy for public bodies as presented.
Do I have a second?
Again.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Greg, you want to speak to this?
So the, a year ago, I mean, we talked about this last, but just as a refresh for everybody. So, uh, more than a year ago, March of 2020, you guys saw a very slightly different version of this. The change, the title changed from Select Board or to Select Board, from Board to Select Board. But otherwise, it's the same policy. So without any, uh, further legislation that we know of, just as was alluded to by Megan about, um, coming out of COVID-19. So if we haven't heard from the State House about whether there's going to be an extension to the, the sort of relief from open meeting law specifically, um, in regards to public meetings. So this board committees, et cetera, et cetera. Then, then we have to abide by open meeting law as of the conclusion of the state of emergency, which is June 15th. So, which is okay, but we, I want to be able to provide an option for the, this board, which would then be extenuated, you know, extended across, um, across all the committees. And it would be this public, um, remote participation, which still does require a quorum of the board, in this case, the board, but any other body. And so you guys have seen it before. You started March of 2020. We went to a state emergency. Now you're seeing it again. And, uh, and so I think, I think it's good to have this as a plan B because we don't know what the state's going to say. And, um, so just as I advocated for it more than a year ago, I'm advocating for it. I still recommend it. I think it's a good idea. It gives an option. It's not that anyone can just do it just because they feel like they don't want to drive into Town Hall, if you will. But it does, it does, uh, it does allow for some, some opportunities and, uh, for someone to still participate but not have to be physically in the room. Again, this applies to the body itself. I'm, you'll see in the next items, um, I'm, I still like the idea of like remote participation, particularly from consultants and staff, et cetera. Or, or even, um, you know, and residents and, and attendees and whatnot, that, um, there's a lot of advantages to Zoom and, and we've had more participation than we've had in, since this is my third year. So, um, that's it. I think you guys know everything I just said. I just wanted to say it aloud again for the public.
All right. No, thank you, Greg. I appreciate it. Uh, so comments regarding this policy, this particular policy?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Jack. Um, not so much about the policy, but I'd like clarity. Are we expected as of June 15th to return on a mandatory basis to in-person meetings?
Okay. So that will be something that we discuss after this policy. So that will be, I believe, but Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what we're going, are we going to be discussing that next?
Yeah, that's my expectation. It's like 12A is the policy, 12B is reopening, which is Jack's point.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. All right.
Greg, on this policy, um, what I'm looking for are those rare occasions, um, that if Justin's still on, Justin hates when we get told there's going to be a major snowstorm. And we, you know, it's the middle of the winter and the board still wants to meet, but we don't want to have dangerous situation where we're coming into a meeting where the snow is expected to start at six and come down like a bat out of hell. And, and, you know, by 10, it'll be six inches, you know? You know the storms I'm talking about, that they, they give us. This policy doesn't seem to permit, um, calling for a, um, a meeting to be held remotely under those circumstances.
No, no. Yeah. You still have to do it in person.
So, so the question would be, should it or, or cancel? So the question should be, should the policy be more broad to allow for that or no?
You can't. So this, we got this from Town Council and it, all it is, is just a, it's, this is what is, this is what has been allowed in accordance with open meeting law before COVID. And so it's, so you still have to have a, a member, you still have to have a quorum of the body physically present. And which means, so no, if you know, if, if three out of the five of y'all can't make it, you got to cancel the meeting.
Okay. Well, because typically if it's going to snow six inches, normally Town Hall's closed and, yeah.
Well, yeah, but that would still, this, uh, an expansion of the policy would still allow because Town Hall's been closed, you know, for a lot of the time during COVID.
Yeah.
But the open meeting.
But the open meeting law allowed for it. So I'm, I was hoping that, that a, the policy that the governor allows or that the, the state law allows for, um, remote meetings outside of state of emergency, allowed for that. But given the fact that you need to have a quorum present in order to hold the meeting, this doesn't help us in weather-related situations.
It's one of those, um, you got to write, write your rep, write your, uh, write your legislative. Tell them, tell them what you think is a good idea.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments on this, concerns? I think David pointed out the last meeting that, you know, originally there were a lot of concerns because none of us had ever done remote meetings before. So now I think we're kind of, we kind of know what they entail at this point. All right. Uh, then hearing no other questions?
It's important to note just when, uh, assuming this gets approved, that when we distribute it out to chairman or chairs of other, of all the committees to let them know that even if just one member, according to the way I'm reading this, even if one member is remote and everybody else is present, all the votes have to be taken by roll call. Even if it's just one member.
Right. Yep. All right. All right. Uh, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So congratulations, Greg, just a year later.
Well, no, okay. Thank you. No, it is, I, I was only trying to, this is just a tool. It's a good tool to use for, for all the boards committees. It kind of keeps, keeps business happening. It's good.
Absolutely. All right. Uh, so now we're going to move on to, uh, the question about reopening.
Right. So I, so madam chair, I'm sorry. Okay, so the, um. So the Board of Health did meet, they talked about reopening. They largely, uh, was, you know, reacted or, or reflected, uh, what the CDC and the DPH, the state's, uh. Department of Public Health was saying. In the meantime, I also submitted to all the board, I'm sorry, to all the offices in town. A face covering guidance because that, that again, that felt, that was in accordance with the lifting of the face covering requirement. That was lifted, uh, May twenty ninth on Saturday. So as of today in town hall, you're not, you're not required to do the same face coverings, although as you can tell, tell from my mellow. It's no, not a problem if you wanted to keep doing it. And then we are trying to look ahead. So by June fifteenth, which is the end of the state of emergency and the, and the local board of the. Towns Board of Health didn't say otherwise. So June fifteenth is the date I have to go by for the end of the state of emergency. And therefore any requirements to remain closed to the public, although. To clarify, we're not closed to the public. I mean, for months now, you can get an appointment. So you, you know, and that, and that has been occurring on like a regular basis. You'll see people come in, uh, to talk about benefits or to talk with the, um, retirement board. Or what have you. But, uh, you know, we haven't, we haven't changed the key fobs on the front and back doors to open. So, you know, you can't just walk in. You do have to have an appointment. But as of June fifteenth is kind of my target date and I'm still feeling it out with the department heads about how they feel and how we're going to be open in time. And I've talked with the, um, Assistant Facilities Manager, which is Kyle Brainard, just to make sure we're ready. So I think we will be ready. Well, my other sort of concern is hybrid meetings, which is something I would like to be able to provide. Uh, that tool. I know I talked about this at this last sub, but I, I would like to build, provide hybrid meeting platform to committees and boards and yourself. So that would allow for both that remote participation, uh, but would also, you know. You, you do by Zoom, right? So we, you're sitting in the room and then you can look at the television screen that we have in the select board room. And one's facing the audience and one is facing the board. And it's possible. So I, I met with Mark Menation with WAVM and he has a, a, like a colleague of his, a consultant that has been doing this at a number of different towns and cities. And they looked at the equipment we have, we needed to upgrade our equipment eventually anyways, um, because we need to go from standard to, um, HD. So we'd have to, we, we should be upgrading as a, just as a rule. But in the meantime, like on our way to that sort, sort of like. Level of upgrade, we, we are looking at how we can connect the board meeting room and the upstairs and the planning board meeting room, the soup camp room downstairs. How to, or Stuart Cameron, how to make those, um. You know, Zoom accessible and hybrid meeting. Um, so we're there. I have a target date of June fifteenth for that. I hope to make that date. I hope we do. I'll, I'll tell the board whether we do or not, but that's, that's the, that's the idea.
So you happen to, oh, go ahead, Justin.
I was gonna say, so to answer Jack's question, that, that is going to be the target is for in-person meetings to begin again on June fifteenth.
Yes, because I, I, like Greg Johnson, I don't really have the justification not to. Now, I'm trying to be sensitive to, I mean, I don't have like the legal justification not to, so I don't have, I, I don't have the save emergency. I don't have the Board of Health giving otherwise direction. So, but I am trying to be sensitive to both the public and to the town police. Because it is, this is, this is a non insignificant act to come out of, of COVID, right? We are to open the doors fully and just allow people to come in. I'm not, I'm not expecting like a wave of people, like as soon as we unlock the doors and people at eight AM on, no, it's not. It's going to be probably the same, same folks coming in saying hi and that's all good. But I, I am trying to be sensitive to. Just like anyone else, it's weird taking off a mask for the first time you walk into a convenience store. Like it's weird, it's weird to come out of COVID. So I'm, we're, I can actually, I see Stephanie on there. So like, this is something that Stephanie and Megan and Beck, like we're all. Uh, everyone in town hall, probably just like all of you in your workplaces are all trying to like comes to grip with. And how to do it in a way that is customer service and respectful and sensitive. So that's where we are. I try, I got about two weeks to figure it out, but we'll, we're, we're making good progress and, and I'll be getting input from, from the department heads and. That, you know, everyone, we're all just, we're, we'll figure it out.
All right, uh, David, go ahead.
Yeah, Greg, did, uh, last meeting I commented on, I thought that that's our la, the last time that we negotiated with Verizon. They agreed that they would upgrade us to HD. Uh. Did you do any checking on that?
I did, I did. You know, I was about to, I can't remember what the email says off the top of my head, but I did, I did reach out to, uh, Mark Menation. He doesn't believe that is so applicable, not in the way you're referring to. I know what you're saying, like just have Verizon cover the cost.
Yeah.
But in a way they are because they are paying us PEG. So PEG, which is a public act and education. So they are paying us. A fee and that's the money I was going to use to, you know, upgrade our stuff because they're already paying us for public access. And so I was going to use that to upgrade. And it's not, we're not talking like a significant, a significant amount of money, like it'll definitely, should definitely be covered by our PEG account. But no, Mark was not, he did not believe that Verizon on top of the PEG account was going to pay us or, or upgrade our, our equipment.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I still have a concern.
Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Not so much about the masks and all that issue. I look at fact that, example. Two weeks from tonight, there's an historical commission meeting, a board of selectmen meeting, perhaps a planning board meeting and perhaps a fourth meeting. We don't have space in town hall.
Right.
Now, what did we do beforehand?
So you'd have to find the space. So, so this is something that Megan and I have talked about too. And so we, and Becky, and we need to go to town clerks and whatnot. This is, this is the logistics concerns with any town, but especially a very active town is ours. So there's only a handful of spaces in town hall. That was already the case. I actually lost a space because I, we rearranged, no, probably most of you wouldn't know this, I rearranged.
The finance conference.
Office. Yeah, thanks, Jack. So, uh, Ken Demaris was down the way, uh, in kind of like the finance hallway. And I put him in the old finance, uh, meeting room. Because we were renovating it downstairs and so, but that's not complete. So I still got Ken upstairs, just playing musical offices. In the meantime, I do think we need to kind of look at what the town resources we have for office spaces, or I'm sorry, for meeting spaces. So we have the Roosevelt room, we have the trustees room in the library. I know I'm speaking for the library and I shouldn't, but I, I know that they've been open in the past to, to allow for other committees to meet in there. Plus all the schools. I think we should, I think we should not be hesitant to ask the schools to use a cafeteria to sit around and have a meeting like I, that I think, I think. I think it's definitely possible. I, I can't imagine, especially with all the schools, that we don't have enough spaces for four committees to meet on the same night.
Well, the library, the historical commissions were meeting usually in the library. As of now, the library is not having meetings. So yes, the schools, library. This is all going to be synchronized and whether the Verizon stuff gets off into the library. Kinds of things, if we want to have hybrid meetings is another issue.
That's true. That's true. That was not my primary focus. My focus, you know, I was.
I understand. I'm just.
Yeah. Well, and that's great. I think that there are going to be some meetings that aren't going to be hybrid. There are going to be some meetings that are, you know, unfortunately. You, again, this is a learning process for all of us. Um, but we did manage to do this before COVID. So we should be able to manage to do it after COVID. It's just a matter of, of. Of working out the bugs.
Right. So no, but it, but it's still, we're not, it's, it's like, um. We kind of have to get back into the rhythm and I, and I, and I appreciate the point, Jack, for bringing it up. And it is something that Megan and I talked about and it is something we just, I need to kind of work it out a little bit more on my end to be able to, I want to make it as easy as possible if I can for people. Like you just, yeah, that's my intention, um, which is to figure it out.
I mean, that's the other option and I'm totally throwing this out there and, and when you're talking about, about the schools, um, but you know, the schools do have. I mean, they do have their, the high school has their auditorium, which has a setup for recording, um, if not live broadcast. But you can record and I don't know about streaming as far as that goes. So you have an auditorium, you have, so. I, you know, depending on the time of year, I know sometimes they do plays and, and, you know, concerts and things like that, but. More often than not, I think that that space could possibly be something that you could ask, you could talk to Brian Hass about.
Ri- right. Or, or whoever the requesting entity is. Like, I don't know if you have to go through WAVM or whatever the case is, but I, but yeah, it's all true.
Yeah.
Also the lounge conference room in the police station too.
Oh, yeah. Yes. And actually I think they are already set up for hybrid. So, um, I'm testing it next week with the senior staff and then, and then that's great. And then we'll have a couple of options.
Greg, you can even have outdoor meetings.
Outdoor meetings.
We put together a cheat sheet of all of those resources we just listed, especially for and target all the, um, uh, the, um. Chairs of all the different bodies, including if we can find it, the contact people for the requesting.
Yes. No, yeah, that's what I meant by make it as easy as possible. Cause what, that spreadsheet you just described, I think I've said word for word. For Megan and Becky. Yes, yes. That's what, that's what, that's what I want to. Like I, I just want people to say like, oh, where it's available, ask this person like that.
It's almost like the field reservation thing they want to do.
Right. But it, most, most people meet regularly. So that's kind of straightforward. Like you just, Monday nights is fine, or every month, first Monday of whatever is finance committee. Okay. They got the select board that day and then, yeah.
Speaking about that, we've got to make sure that our name tags now says select board, not selectman.
Becky's on it.
Okay.
Excellent. All right. Um, so any other questions or comments about this?
I'm at, yeah. Does anyone have any questions about reopening in general? Is, is because I, I'm, there's always, I know there's going to be something we don't, we don't, there's something we overlook, of course. But if, if you guys think of anything either now or later, shoot me an email, send me a text. If you hear about something in another town, anything to, because I'm, I'm trying to be like, kind of like a sponge and figure out.
So Greg, who's going to be responsible for communicating what we just voted on to everybody in town?
This guy and Becky and the town clerks. Like, we're going to make sure that, that, that we get it out there.
So the five of us don't have to listen to it.
Oh, no, I'm sure they'll email us.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. It'll be on social media tomorrow morning anyway, but yeah.
Yes, is it really the remote meeting policies every time I, Chris?
And the, and going back to.
I'm more, I'm more thinking with a remote meeting policy. There was a little bit of noise about it a couple of weeks ago, but it kind of died down.
Oh, well, yeah, no, we were gonna, we, we just sent, we can send, we send stuff out to all the boards.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that, that's the thing is that I know Greg mentioned, you know, if you hear something in other towns, I think that's, that's also the thing is, is, uh. I know that. I had asked Greg and I knew he was going to do it on his own anyways, but to kind of look around and see what other towns are doing for reopening. And really there is no consistent, all towns are doing X or all towns are doing Y. It's, it really is a mix. Everyone's trying to. Be mindful of, of what everyone's been through and trying to open thoughtfully and responsibly. But also try to move to get the business of the town moving forward in a more. Traditional sense. So.
I, I don't think there's any consistency in any. Anywhere, businesses, restaurants. No, no one has any consistency yet.
We'll get there eventually.
Just keep carrying that mask around in case I need it.
Yeah.
It's become a great accessory.
Well, yeah, it's kind of like your, your cockies, not to have it with you.
Right. All right. Anyone else?
I finally get to see what the people at Market Basket look like.
Exactly. All right. Uh, so next. Uh, Greg, do you want to report to us on the, uh? American Rescue Plan Act.
Right. Not a lot to add, um, from what, what previously known. I was hoping that we would get a little more guidance from DLS, uh, Division of Local Services on their, under Department of Revenue or A and F, which is the. Governor's Budget Team. I was hoping that we would get a little more direction. Haven't. So I've been, um. But we, we did discuss this at the, at the budget subcommittee, uh, just the other day. And, and my, my intention is this, we will get. And, you know, we will get the input, the budget request from the various boards, committees, departments, offices that say, just like any other capital planning. Process or whatnot. So everyone submits their budget request that specifically for the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. And then that comes to me, I form a, a budget, if you will, with all those recommendations. Well. With those requests, I create a recommendation. I provide it to you. I would like to go through the budget subcommittee so it can be deliberated upon. At the budget subcommittee meeting, and I'm sorry for stepping on David for this or Jeff for this or like reporting, but. It was, that was discussed, like that procedure and how, and how, and just like how it could be properly. And one of the suggestions was to have a, another, um. Possibly a tri board meeting, so to have, to have everybody in the same room. It, it wasn't necessarily that that was what we were going to do, but that was one of the considerations is to get, get input directly from all the members of the three bodies. Um, so that's a possibility. But in the meantime, my, my intention is just to kind of like the standard approach. For the formation of any budget, get the budget request, develop a budget, provide us a recommendation to the select board.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions? About it? You, you're, you're still not giving us much to go on.
Uh, I, you've given, I, anything I have, you've seen. So.
I know, I know. But I'm. Anxiously waiting.
Yeah.
The, the bottom line is we know the dollar amount is approximately three million dollars. And we know that there are limits to how that money can be spent. And we know we have a list of our issues that we think fit those categories.
Yeah.
The schools have begun to establish their list of what they think fits those categories.
Well, that, doesn't the school get a separate ARPA? I thought there was a set, there was.
They get SRS round three. So they get a third round of SRS. I, it don't, I don't call me, oh, I'm being recorded, but I'm pretty sure that's a, I'm pretty sure it's a third round of SRS.
Okay. All right. I thought they were getting, I thought there were two, I thought they, they were included in the ARPA, like, uh. Because it's municipalities and then there's schools, I thought.
Uh, they may, they may, but certainly the, the three point three million dollars that David's referring to is like the general government ARPA.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, David, I didn't mean to.
No, no, my, my point is that we, I think we have a general understanding of what. We've, what we're expecting from a check. And then what we can. Use it on, and then the argument becomes priorities. Or not argument, but the discussion among our peers, uh, and colleagues at the school side becomes priorities. And how it's best, um, spent, um, to give us, to give the community the best bang for the buck. You know, the concern is if, the schools have said that they are interested in funding some, uh, benefits for some employees. And they guarantee or they suggest that those employees are going to be limited to the three years that is covered by the, uh. By the federal money. You know. As I've expressed before, I have some concern in building any type of operational budget with non guaranteed recurring money. And so we need to make sure that we've got, uh. A full, if we do decide to go in that direction, that we've got a full understanding of, uh. You know, that it's going to be limited and that if it's not, that we have to have a plan for how that. In the future gets funded, any additional ongoing. So.
Okay. All right. And anyone else have any questions, comments? We will stay tuned. And I'm not sure. I think that the tri board meeting might actually be, it might be. The most efficient way to move it forward once we get to a point. To have all the committees on board. Um, but we'll see, see how that works out.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think we're going to do it before. Zoom would have been the easiest way, right? You can get fifty people in the same room, but, um, now what? That's all right.
Yeah, so, okay. Okay. Uh, anyone else have anything? All right. Then let's move on to the, uh, police union contract and I will, uh, entertain a motion.
Yeah. Move to approve the collective bargaining agreement. With the New England Peace Benevolent Police Benevolent Association, Locals fifty-four and fifty-five. Police unions for fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. As presented and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody have any questions or comments about this? All right, we'll just move forward.
Madam Chair, can I just say? No, you know what? No, take your vote, take your vote.
No, 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 go ahead.
Uh, no, I'd like to hear the vote, please, actually.
All right then. All right, all in favor, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So now, Greg, what would you like to say?
Well, I gotta thank Stephanie Duggan for all her work as HR manager in negotiating this amongst all the other negotiations and salary having plans and personal policies and et cetera, et cetera, and all the extra work we're doing, especially coming out of COVID. But um but this has been actually, I don't even recall, I don't even have any, we're we've been negotiating a lot online on on Zoom and it's been great and it's been all been, it's all been thanks to Stephanie. So um, yeah, so thank you, Stephanie, for all all the work you've been doing, great job on this one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work and and we're we're getting it done. Slowly but surely, we'll get there. All right, uh, we'll move on to uh Town Administrator Report.
So I, thank you, Madam Chair, so um a lot of great pictures in the TA report, I encourage everyone to take a look at it. A couple of things I wanted to highlight um beyond the pictures is um I we I, you know, we did update the COVID information at the at the on the TA report, which is also reflected on our online web, on our uh online sources, and I tried, we tried to provide links to all the state sources as well. Um, there, we do have some shots left over in the fridge in um in the police dispatch room, and we're trying to identify any remaining town staff and school staff that we could probably give shots to, but anyways, there's not that many, there's there's like twenty or so left over, but um we're gonna try to give those out as best we can internally first and prioritize those people, customers facing, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but as everyone knows, we're kind of towards the tail end, so so we're just trying to use up the rest of the supply that we have available. Um, I already mentioned earlier about the face covering uh mandate being lifted and we're trying to get, you know, trying to reopen town hall and town offices and whatnot. Um, I'm trying to look if there's anything else I want to highlight. All right. Well, very good, so so Justin DiMarco did make reference to, so DPW Director Justin DiMarco did make reference to um to the PFAS memo, so I uploaded that, in fact, the even the recent um spreadsheet that his office provided. So I I attached that to the TA report, that'll wait, it'll go online. And uh perhaps we should put it on the DPW website as well, so that everyone can kind of access to it. So those are the big items I want to hit up, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any comments? Questions? I can't wait to get on this Thomas Street and see the overlook.
Yeah, looks great.
All right. And you have to ask, so the grab and go event for the uh COA, it was a Thanksgiving dinner?
Oh, I don't know, actually.
That's what she.
That's what you said.
That is what I wrote, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I copied and pasted that from Amy, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna blame Amy, it was me, I don't know, I don't know what I, yeah, you're right, I did write Thanksgiving.
That that goes, yeah, that goes along with the gold course.
Maybe it was a Thanksgiving, you know what, I didn't look what they were giving out, couldn't, could have had turkey and stuffing in there, I don't know.
Never know, it's good any time of year.
Yeah, that's good, very, very good reading, Madam Chair, very good reading.
All right. Um, okay, so for item number B, do we need to, is this just a review or do we need to accept these minutes?
No, this is just an acceptance, so there's, you don't have to, you don't have to approve the minutes because they were already submitted. But I, it's just kind of, as I was looking at the town chart, doing the town charter review and whatnot, and I noticed, sure enough, there's a lot of small things, nuances to the town charter and the bylaws and whatnot, and this is one of them, I just found that that just as a, for the awareness of the board, the town clerk will keep a record of the minutes of all special and annual town meetings, which you already knew she did. These minutes will be delivered to the select board and made available to the public on the town website, no more than thirty days. So I'm I'm delivering this to the select board, if you will.
Okay.
I know it's a little odd, but I caught it in the town charter and I, so I threw it in.
Hey, no, that works, that works, and we know moving forward, so that's good. Uh, anyone have any questions about it?
I got a question for Justin, I know you're on your, all right, you were looking down, so I didn't want to surprise you. Uh, Greg's comment about all of these days coming up with recycling days and uh you listed dates. Uh, just for public information, uh, what's, what are the costs associated for per for per resident to attend the recycling? Is it like twenty bucks a car or something for that for that or?
It depends on um the actual usage, so shredding has its own price, um chipping has its own price. You know, depending on what you bring for metal, et cetera, all those fees can be um somewhat um determined on our website. And certain ones have to be developed um per a visual inspection of what's brought. Um, because one truckload is bigger than another truckload, so typically, we have like a general fee for a truckload full of brush. But there's times where we've had somebody come with what would be considered two to three truckloads stuck on one truck and we had to make a determination based off of that, but you can get the rough fees, you can get the rough fees on the DPW website.
Okay.
I think people are interested in the sh- the shredding in particular and, you know, trying to figure out how much how much it costs, I I've been to one of the shredding things before, it's remarkable how quickly they take it and everything else and uh I I thought it was like a ten or fifteen dollar fee or something like that, but I.
Yeah, the shred, the shredding for a carload is uh usually about ten to twenty. You'd be surprised, Dave, sometimes people show up with like an eco van filled with twenty years worth of stuff and that might jump the rate up to thirty forty, but no, it is inexpensive, everything that the recycle center provides for a service is done just for the recapturing of the cost, there is no, there is no profit margin.
All right. Anyone else have, so I didn't want to have any questions about the um minutes either? I do want to congratulate Joanna on her first official town meeting as well. Uh, so, thank you very much, Joanna.
Thank you.
Watch out, girl.
Thank you so much. Hi, Justin.
I thought you had done last year's uh town meeting.
This was my first town meeting, I've done three elections, but uh this was my first town meeting.
Oh, I would have said something that day, I I thought you had already done one of those.
No, no, my first one, and I think it went well.
That's how you know how good she is, on her first one, you didn't even know.
Exactly. Sounds good, thanks, Joanna.
Thank you, have a great night, everyone.
You too.
You too.
All right, uh next, we're gonna do uh the bull board goal setting for twenty uh for FY twenty-one. Uh, the goal-setting workshop, wondering if anyone has an idea of what they what that would look like, do they want it outside, inside, um time of year? You know, the fact that we're all consistent on the board for this coming year, I mean, we could do it quicker. Um, I don't know how people feel about doing it in the summertime, I know Greg, you know, Greg has some, we all have vacations, so um but I'm willing to hear what anybody thinks. Typically, it's a weekday, I know we did it over on a weekend, a couple, like a weekday evening, so I think we've done it like six o'clock at night, six thirty, I think.
Yeah, I think that's right, and we did it in the golf course before, that's true.
Yeah, but last year, because of, you know, because of COVID, we did it, you know, outside. You know, on a on a Saturday morning, so I'm open to hear any suggestions. Or thoughts.
I like the Saturday morning, but um that's just me.
Okay.
I'm certainly open to an evening, because those are fine, too.
Okay.
I'm I'm ready, I'm ready to do an evening.
You want to do an evening? Okay.
I'm I'm open either way.
I am as well. Chris?
I'm fine with either.
So, so Armand and David can fight.
No, I, evening is fine.
All right, so the next question is, are we, you know, we'd like to get to you know, having these discussions earlier in our, in the tenure, I think, so, you know, instead of waiting till September, October. Um, do you think that we could make it work in July or August? Okay, I had some nodding.
True.
All right. Uh, so what?
I could look at some dates, Madam Chair, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to be helpful, but I could.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
I can toss out some dates.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I'm not around August eighth to like the fourteenth or something like that, whatever that week is.
Okay, about July twenty-second? The Thursday.
It's very specific.
I know, I just picked up.
Twenty-second, I like it.
I'm open.
David, are you around? Oh, you're muted.
Right now, my calendar looks like it's open that day.
Yeah, well, close it.
Greg, you, are you around July twenty-second?
Oh, man. Yes. Yes, I am. Megan, Megan, are you?
All right, look at that. Justine, that was good, you picked it out of the hat.
Yeah.
All right, no, I'm just kidding, I can't do it, no, I'm kidding. So, all right, so do you want to tentatively pencil in July twenty-second? Um, and we'll go with, we'll figure out time, you know, I think six, the six thirty work, I know we were due a little bit earlier than the regular meetings.
Six thirty, cool.
All right. Um, do we want to try the golf course again? Do you want to? Does that work? I'm actually looking at you, Greg, sorry, you can't tell that.
Oh, me? Oh, I'm cool with that. Um, yeah, yes, uh I, no, I'm looking at, I'm looking at everybody, I'm always, I speak when I spoke to you, Madam Chair, no, I I think, I think the golf course is a great setting, I thought it was, it was pretty relaxed. Uh, me and Megan can still throw up like a screen.
Yep.
Um, actually, it had the TV, hold on, Justin is about to tell us, no, no, I'm just.
I just, uh, you are muted, Justin, before you go any further.
That may be the time where the roof is under construction, if everything goes right, so we want to make sure, we might want to just mix it right away just because of the plan.
All right.
Maybe the library trustees room, or maybe the peace trading room, I can, I can see what's available.
I think the library would be a good idea.
Or are you cool with maybe somewhere offsite? I don't know, I haven't.
Yes. Oh, I am.
I could try somewhere in town, I don't know, I want to say the sanctuary, but I haven't talked to Will in a long time, and I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm trying to be like creative.
Yeah, all right, well, we'll do, so we came up with.
People. Sanctuary is a big room for eight people.
We could meet up in a balcony.
All right, fine, but still, like, I I I'll, I'm, let me think about it, Madam Chair, and I'll I'll see what's available.
Absolutely, all right, place to be determined, date so far, July twenty-second.
Okay.
Perfect.
The uh the police, the police room is always nice, that's a nice room, but.
Yeah.
It's true.
All right. Then let us move on to the uh select board policies that David and Greg have been working on. Uh, who, Greg or David, who would like to speak to this?
Greg, Greg can take it.
Oh, very good, so um I started with just the policies that were in from two thousand nine and then I I just went, I just went down the list, so the the only you, anytime you would see like a highlighted change, I tried to, I tried to note that, so if it's in green, for example, then it's some, it's wording that David and I added. Um, or you can see where I stroke, you know, we we struck uh phrases or words that we thought were just that we, David and I recommend, just removing. A lot of it is updating it, like, we tried to be reflective of what the current practices of the board are. Um, but David had some suggestions about rearranging, there's some sequencing, perhaps. Um, so, you know, I also kept all my comments in there, you can also see one comment from Megan Zamudo, I I I was, you know, David and I tried to show our work in a way, just that the board, you guys could see like how we, where we were and and some of the reasoning. Uh, but I think David and I are, I think this is a pretty good product, frankly, I think this, this is not, it may not look like it's a significant change, but I think it does sort of codify uh how the board has evolved and how your procedures may evolve and whatnot. And it doesn't, it doesn't entirely set you in stone, some some places it does say, you know, the, at the chair's discretion or the board may do this or whatever the case may be, so it doesn't, and perhaps we update this every year or or as needed, uh, because it is just your document.
Can this be something we discuss at our goals thing, you just go through these thirty-six one at a time or a meeting prior to that?
That's a good idea.
On these thirty-six, I guess, the point is, is, and I don't, I don't take exception with any one of the the ones that I read, but it just is thirty-six different items, and most of them have a question mark attached, so just go through them one at a time.
Oh, those are my comments, that's true.
It doesn't just, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't object to anything I see, but it's just would be interesting to just go down, go right through the list one at a time and, you know.
That's a good idea.
I don't know if anyone agrees with that thought or not, but it just, it just seems there's a, there's a bunch of different questions being asked and you know, some of them might be, well, what's the thought behind that or that type of thing, but.
Right.
I don't know if it's, if it's the right venue is the goal-setting meeting, because that takes away from time setting, setting goals.
Or in a different meeting, just put it as a, you know, quick agenda, I don't think, I don't think it would take much, that much time, because there's not much, there's no, nothing.
Yeah, this, this was not meant to be voted on this evening, because it's the first time you're seeing it, so. Uh, you know, I would suggest, if you read through it, we can certainly, you know, put it on the agenda for a full discussion if we have to the next meeting or even once we get into the next fiscal year. And ask whatever questions are there, most of the comments that are on there are, you know, Greg and I had some lengthy discussions, we did, we did this over four hours, so it was, it was two nights, two hours each, so there was thought put into each one of the the items that uh that are discussed.
I wasn't, I wasn't questioning that at all.
No, no, I know, I know that, I'm not suggesting that you were, it's.
I I kind of like the idea that Chris is suggesting that we should maybe have it um for discussion for one of our meetings prior to our goal-setting session.
That's not a bad idea, so we have two meetings, the regular meetings, so if you want to have this at a regular meeting, the June fifteenth might, well.
It's already starting to fill up.
Yes, it is. So, um but either way, I mean, like, I'll, I'll, I'll look at it and I'll look at it with Justine and and then um we can see where we can fit it in or or the next meeting, perhaps, and maybe, maybe Justine and I will maybe we'll come up with it, maybe a special meeting is applicable. I don't know, but that's, that's a good point.
Okay.
It is, it is a lot to look at, and of course, like, I I I suspect the board would take it seriously, of course, to like look.
Yeah, it's it's comprehensive, so it's, it's, it deserves discussion and it's not the end of the day either, I mean, some of these things are just ideas, right, so.
It's true.
I I I do think I see the value in having, um, I I realize that we all have lots of meetings, but I almost, I see the value of having it at, almost as a separate meeting just because it would, you know, kind of like the marijuana thing where we can all, we all know we're on the same page, or we all know what everybody's views are and just kind of move it forward. So maybe we can take a look at that.
Okay.
All right. We'll figure that out. Anything else regarding that? Okay.
There's no, there's no timeline to it, of course, because it's already eleven years old, twelve years old, so.
Yep. We can work on, maybe that's the goal, the goal is to have it finalized by like September, hey?
Yes, that's a good goal, actually, to, that's, yeah, that's a good goal, actionable, attainable.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
Right, known as a smart goal.
Yep.
Measurable.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to the chair report, um, I don't have too much for this evening, I probably should, but uh unfortunately, I do not. Uh, but one of the things that uh has come up is there are some scheduling conflicts for the week of July fourth. Um, July fourth vacation week, and so uh, we're gonna postpone the meeting and I meet July thirteenth, because we do have a lot every time we meet, so I don't want to skip an entire meeting and have everything on whatever it is, the twenty, the twentieth. So I wanted to see if anyone would move that to reschedule that meeting.
Yeah, I'll move to reschedule the July sixth twenty twenty-one selectman's meeting from July, uh, until the following week, July thirteenth, is that what we want to do?
Yep.
Twenty twenty-one, it's at seven PM.
Excellent, wait a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, all right. All right. And anyone have any questions or concerns about this? We'll obviously make it known on our on the town website that it's that that's not that we're meeting not meeting that week. All in favor, Chris?
Yes, I'm in favor.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you. Other than that, I want to congratulate the senior class of twenty twenty one for a very unconventional senior year. And I hope that they have, I hope this is the toughest thing they had to go through, and I hope they have a great time next year with whatever they end up doing. And I am really proud of all of our students and and they should be proud of themselves. That is all I have for this evening. How about Chris?
Yeah, I I just echo the same congratulations to the senior class and all the rest of the the, you know, the entire school system, everybody involved. But the that the only other thing I have is we we didn't have a we didn't have anything from Memorial Day. Oddly, it's just to David, you know, as David often says, you see it on you see what other towns are doing and pretty much everyone around us didn't cancel theirs. We were kind of the only ones that ended up canceling it. What which is, you know, I mean, if 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 Marge is running it and she feels as though she wants to cancel it, that's her prerogative. And and I don't I don't have any complaint about it at all, but I know some people made note of the fact that we're the only people that did, and that's it's just too bad. But and speaking about Marge, we have a proclamation for her and some other things. And I don't know what we're gonna do about about Memorial Day, whether it's going to be rescheduled or an event that's going to be rescheduled. But if not, I'd like to suggest we hold on to that and present it to her at our special town meeting in the fall. In in, you know, honor her in front of a larger body because she certainly is. I mean, she certainly deserves to be recognized in front of a a large body of people for all her contributions over the years. And that's you know, the all all the veterans things, the hometown heroes things and all her different contributions are just too many to even. I have a bio that Greg sent me that she helped write and I mean, it's just it's just too many things that she just didn't even put in there that she's been responsible for. So if and when the time comes, I'm happy to present it to her, but it would be nice if we could do it more than in front of twenty people at Memorial Park. Is is that's that's it. And that's all I have other than that. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. I think and and that is so I know she is trying to do something hopefully for this weekend. I'm 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 very hopeful. I realize it's last minute, but if if anyone can pull it together, we can pull it together. So.
We're in a hurry. That guy just told us the weekend was today.
I know. Forgot about that. So anyways, and how about David?
Um, I I like all the comments about the congratulations to the graduating seniors. I know this Friday is their 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 car parade that I'm sure they're all excited about. And then the following Friday will be graduation. So good for them. Congratulations and good luck to the senior class. The one issue that I have heard and seen myself is with the new trees downtown, everything wonderful. They look great. But apparently one tree was placed immediately in front of the no left turn sign at the CBS. So that when.
It's blocking the sign.
You can't see the sign as you come down. I don't know. I guess the sign.
Nobody reads the sign anyway, David.
The tree can't be moved at this point, but the sign can.
That turn is gonna get you one way or the other, David. That turn is out to get you.
So, you know, we need to at least try to move the sign.
We can look at it. Justin's listening. We'll we'll look at it.
And that is all I have.
All right, sounds good, David. How about you, Jeff?
I'll also pass on my congratulations to the graduating senior class. I saw one video from one of the senior projects about what makes Maynard special. It's just a couple of minutes. I I if you haven't seen it, I suggest you go check it out. It's really well done. I also wanted to point out that the historical commission, I know Jack was on here earlier, is going to be doing the Mill Marker dedication this Saturday morning. And if you haven't seen it, I'm sure everybody has. It looks fantastic. And so just a big thanks to the historical committee for putting that together. And I think that's it for me.
Great, thank you. And actually, Jeff, I'll piggyback off that. The also the Sessos Centennial event is this Saturday as well after after and while I'm thinking of it. The Relay for Life is on Friday night after the senior parade. So a lot going on this weekend.
I have a question.
What? Yes, sir.
Is the is the Mill Marker, is that the thing we they solicit donations for?
Yes, yep.
All right, okay. I was I wasn't sure. For some reason or other, in my mind, I was thinking like there were bricks or something for it. You know, like a brick program, but I don't think that that applies.
Yeah, and there's two sides to it. I didn't realize there were two sides to it when I first saw it, but it's very, very well done. I agree, Jeff.
It is.
Armand?
Yeah, by the way, I just piggyback on what Jeff just said about the if you had a chance to see the project that was done by the senior, it was awesome. Very, it kind of spotlights Maynard and it's it's nice to see that. So I'm hoping that if they had nothing happens this weekend and for celebration of Memorial Day, hopefully the veterans, they are going to be a big one and then we could make up for it. And maybe possibly, Chris, I don't know if it's too late, but maybe that would be a good place to recognize Marge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that could be appropriate. And then the only thing that I have is I'm I'm excited to go to the sanctuary this Friday for the first, you know, opening with the band. So I'm looking forward to that. So I'm I'm excited to see sanctuary back on on the map again.
Great.
So I got.
All righty then. Okay.
Megan.
Yep.
See, we could we could hear you without you being on.
All right. Anyone have anything else before we sign off? All right then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Soon.
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Have a great night, everybody. And a good weekend, too.
Thank you.